Device, if you're kind enough to put it on silent or vibrate. Appreciate that courtesy. We always start our meeting with the pledge of allegiance and then we'd ask you to remain standing. We'll have a moment of silence. Commissioner Sanada, would you please listen? Pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. We'll have a moment of silence. Thank you, everybody. Vanessa, would you mind calling the roll, please?
Commissioner Sanada?
Yes, here.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Here.
Commissioner Bogler?
Here, we have a quorum. We always have two opportunities during our meeting for public comment. One in just a few moments and then one before we adjourn, we welcome your comments. We ask if they be related to county government matters. And you're welcome to speak both times. You're welcome to speak one of the two times or if you're just here to listen, that's equally fine. And during comment period, if you could try to limit your comments to around five minutes or less, we certainly appreciate that courtesy. Before I go any further, I'd like to recognize Commissioner Sanada because he brought a guest with him today. Chris, if you'd like to introduce your guest to us, please.
Sure. Thank you, Chairman Bogler. Tonight, today we have Antonio Nai, a senior at Shenango High School. He is shadowing myself and the other two commissioners today. This is our third meeting already today. We're trying to give Antonio a good experience at the courthouse and I'd thank the other role officers who he's going to be visiting with today, just to give them an understanding. So he wants to stand up and tell you, just a second one time. The guest can sit here. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sanada and Antonio. We're pleased and honored to have you here today. And I know a senior year in high school is a very important year in your life. Hope it's a fun year. Hope you have a lot of fun. I know I did when I was a senior in high school. Probably had too much fun sometime. But I wish you well in your future endeavors. I wish you continued success.
Thank you.
We're very glad to have you. Next item on the agenda would be role officer reports and comments. We always set aside time for any of the other elected officials if they wish to attend. And today we have none in our audience. So that does take us to public comment. If you do have a comment, if you could identify, say who you are for the record, but I'll open for anybody who has a comment at this time. Mrs. Burcheck?
I see you want to allocate some money to the Mission Barn. Could you explain what the Mission Barn is and what the connection is between the county and the Mission Barn?
I'll be glad to do that. In fact, I'll do it right now, since you have. For many years, this probably goes back 10 or 15 years or so, there is a fund in the registered recorders office known as the Affordable Housing Fund. That fund was established by state law. The state gives the registered recorders office the authority to levy a small fee on title transfers and I believe on the recording of deeds, if I'm not mistaken. And the dollars from those transfers are then put into this Affordable Housing Fund and the commissioners are able to utilize these dollars to assist in community projects that help with housing issues. So historically, we've had two nonprofit agencies in the county that on a yearly basis have come to the county for some of these dollars from this fund. It's not tax dollars, not coming out of the property tax. The one we'll be voting on today is an organization known as the Mission Barn. And for many years, they were known as the Eastbrook Mission Barn. They used to be headquartered located out in Hickory Township. And within the last few years, they moved over to Shenango Township, back of the Cracks Air Building on 422, kind of close to where the Midor's catering facility is located. What they do, what the Mission Barn does, is build ramps for people who own their houses and are having accessibility issues. Maybe they can no longer go down a flight of steps. So the Mission Barn will go out and construct handicap ramps for these people throughout Lawrence County. And Mission Barn has requested an allocation of $15,000 and that's for us to consider later in the meeting. The other agency that through the years has also come to us is based down in Elwood City, the Elwood City area. That's known as the Carpenter's Project. And the Carpenter's Project is a volunteer group that in the summer months, they accept applications from people in the community, both Elwood City and some of the surrounding municipalities, that might need some work done on the exterior of their homes. And the Carpenter's Project will go out and do that type of work. So I expect later in the spring that we'll probably get a request from them as well. And if I'm not mistaken, and if I am, I'll correct myself next week, I believe, I believe that the redevelopment authority has used some of these dollars for housing rehab. Does that sound right to you?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you. So some of the funds have been utilized there as well. But that's some of the background on how the fund was established. It was established by way of a state law. And then how those funds are permitted to be used. And this is one example of that. Gentlemen, do either of you have anything to add to Mrs. Burcheck's question? Thank you. Other public comments? Hearing none. We'll continue the meeting and then before we adjourn, we'll open it back up. So thank you. Under fiscal and contractual, most weeks we receive, and this week's no exception, we receive documents from the county comptroller's office. Technically, it's known as the check reconciliation register, but we sometimes call it the warrant register. It's a listing of the checks that have been cut by the comptroller's office and it's available to anybody who wishes to take a look at it. And I'll give my colleagues time to look over. We have them dated February 12 and February 15. So gentlemen, take your time and then whenever, whenever you're ready, I could take a motion then to accept the documents as they have been submitted. Incidentally, I neglected to mention that at the outset, I should have noted that this meeting is being livestreamed and is being recorded. It's available on YouTube and it's also being verbally recorded. I apologize for not making note of that. If you gentlemen are ready, I could take a motion to accept the warrant registers.
I move that we accept the warrant registers.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you both gentlemen. Any questions about the warrant registers? We have a motion to accept them. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanada?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thanks, Vanessa. Next, we have the minutes of the February 13 commissioners meeting. And gentlemen, I'll give you time to look them over and whenever you're ready, I could take a motion to adopt the minutes.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
I second that motion.
Thank you both gentlemen. Any comments or discussion regarding the minutes? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanada?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much. We move on to reports from the commissioners. We each take turns each week with any updates or matters that we'd like to talk about. Today, Commissioner Sanada gets to go first.
Thank you, Chairman Bogler. I think we had another product week last week. Commissioner Kennedy got a chance to visit with four role officers and their staffs. We've got a chance to visit with the district attorney's office. Thought was very helpful to us to get the understanding of what they do and their various areas of interest. And it just, I think it's been important. We still have a long way to go with any of our offices up here, but you know, I think it's been helpful to both of us to get more understanding of what happens and what the staff does. So far, I'm very impressed with what I'm seeing as far as the operation, you know, of the government. The other thing that was very important to us, and I know, I'm sure Commissioner Kennedy would comment as well, we had an opportunity to visit with Tim Germaine, the elections officer. He gave us the full thorough review and I'm sure that we, the subject will talk about when we have the election board meeting. But Mr. Germaine was very thorough with the whole process of how it starts from the mail-in ballots right up until election night and the machine. So we had an opportunity to observe a couple of processes, a couple of way through. So just touching on that, that happened this past week. We'll talk about that further as far as the safety of the election and everything when we have the election board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chris. Dan, you're next.
I think Chris and I have had probably a lot of fun going out and meeting these people. One of the important things I think we both take away from this is they tell us, thank you for coming to see them and get to know who they are. In the past, they said, this didn't happen. We're doing something different. We hope we start a policy that that's what happens when you become a county commissioner. You go around and meet all the people and understand really what each department does and what each person does. I think after last week, we realized how important we have some people in here. Of course, you said about Mr. Germaine and his staff over there. What they do is way beyond, you know, you're going to the election and you're checking a name off. What happens after that is a whole new ballgame. It's something that I never realized what it has to go through and how secure that department really is. I think we even learned more of that this morning with our IT director, Bill Ordinaro, and what a job he does. I had a little issue last week, popped up on my computer, changed my password and I called Bill up and he says, is this why we got to do this? And change it again and off we go. But without people like that in this courthouse, I'd hate to see where we'd be at with the technology of today. It just keeps going and going. So this week, we're going to have another busy week. You and I running all over the place, but it's running, it's getting us some exercise and walking along this courthouse. It's enjoyable to learn what everybody does in this courthouse.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Thank you both. I know you've both have been extremely busy and I appreciate that you're taking the time to meet these folks. Well, since we met last Tuesday, last Wednesday, Commissioner Sanada and I were able to attend the county planning commission's monthly meeting, which was held at the Elwood City Borough Municipal Building. Now, Mr. Kennedy had a commitment with the Economic Development Corporation, I think. Yes, and he's on that board. So he had that commitment. I don't want you to think that he was overlooking the planning commission. He had a very important meeting he had to attend. So sometimes the beauty of having three of us, that maybe two can go one direction and one can go the other when there are multiple meetings. So we were all three busy that day. I had to go down to Harrisburg Thursday and Friday. I chair the county commissioners association's workers compensation trust fund board and we meet three times a year. So I had to go down for that meeting. And of course, yesterday was a holiday. It was President's Day, so the building was closed. But I believe that's, that's all I have at this time. We take new business and Joe Ellen is with us. Do you mind coming up to? Joe Ellen Pastore is the director of the county law library. And I think every year we see you about this time, if I'm not mistaken. You have a proposed resolution and what number is it, Vanessa?
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three. And this involves a contract with Thomson Reuters. But I'll let you explain what they do and why we need to have the contract.
The last time I was here, if you recall, I believe we discussed our online services with Thomson Reuters, which is the same company. So this is Thomson Reuters for our book subscriptions, our physical books in the law library. So we had, that contract was in place since 2015 and I wished to make some changes. There were some items that aren't being used as much and we wanted to discontinue those. So wanting to do that, we had to write a new contract. So in doing so, we combined two separate account numbers into one and it's going to streamline it a little bit better for myself as well as the comptroller's office. They won't have so many invoices coming through. They'll have one invoice a month and let's find a book. In the first year, the cost per month will be a flat rate of $1,330 a month. In year two, $1,409.80 a month. In year three, $1,494.39 a month. So that'll be for a three-year contract. There was an option for two-year, three-year, or five-year. So three-year was the best. It's a six percent increase per year over year. Right now, the one that is in contract is at a nine percent increase, so because it's just been automatically renewing. So but in reference to the monthly cost and the yearbook costs, the monthly cost for 2023 for these same items was $18,454.10. So in 2024, it will be with this new contract, $15,960. So savings of $24.9410 a year annually. We'll save that amount with the decrease in products and the signing of the contract with the better overall increasing rate at six percent rather than nine percent. And also, as they like to say, we're friends with Thomson Reuters for a three-year sentence. So and they don't have to make any changes. We don't have to make any changes. And also, I do think it'll help only having one invoice from the library go through the comptroller's office and through commissioner's office once a month rather than all individual invoices. So are there any questions regarding that?
Well, thank you. And you touched on it, you know, 30 years ago, our law library was located where courtroom five now is, which was actually the original courtroom way back to the 1800s. And before the internet, everything was in a book form. And that whole room was full of books. As time went on and technology changed, so much of that is now available online. So that enabled us to no longer need that huge space for all those books, which enabled us to reopen that as a courtroom. But if I'm hearing this correctly, and I'm assuming that part of this is mandated from the Commonwealth, that's an assumption I'm going to make, you still have to have certain things in print. Is that true?
Certain things are easier to search in print for someone who's not comfortable with the internet-less law search, which is provided for Thomson Reuters. If you don't necessarily know what you're doing there, it's sometimes easier to look at the book. So I think some of that is for the public benefit, for individuals who come in from the public to look at the books. And I do have a number of attorneys that come in and still use the books, so.
And you answered my, you basically answered my next question. The law library is open to the public?
Yes, correct.
I mean, obviously, folks in the legal profession utilize it a great deal, but anyone from the public can go into the law library and utilize those materials. I assume you have a public computer in that office that people can use?
We have the public computer that anyone can access the Westlaw on that. There are things that are now not held in physical books that, again, as we stated earlier, are on the internet search through Westlaw. But it's easy, I can pull out a landlord tenant book and hand individual landlord tenant book. I can pull out custody and hand in custody. I can pull out divorce and hand them. So that's nice to be able to do that. So that's generally, we have mostly some horn books, individual items, and then we have the Pennsylvania statutes and Pennsylvania code. We also house ordinances through all of the municipalities throughout the county. And I handle preparing custody forms, divorce forms for individuals who need to come in and pick those up. So then that's easier for them to file without an attorney, so they have the whole form.
I appreciate that overview and it reinforces the fact that even though it's called the law library, it's not just for lawyers. It's for anybody from Lawrence County and utilize the services you offer. So thank you. Mr. Kennedy, do you have questions? Thank you. Mr. Sanada?
Just briefly, appreciate your efforts.
Thank you.
I think it's so important and we have hard ways that we can actually save money. We commend you for that. I think it's great we have employees that are looking out for the interest out there.
I appreciate that.
So I just want to stress what Commissioner Bogler said, with technology and everything today, we want to still provide the best services we can. So thank you.
Thank you.
One final note, if I'm not mistaken, you'll correct me if I'm wrong, my assumption is that in every courthouse in the Commonwealth, there is a law library.
There is a law library. There isn't always a law librarian.
I see.
So.
Probably some of the smaller counties.
Correct, correct. So some of them are similar to ours where they're small size. Some of them, you know, are much larger. But it is nice because we have a network of individuals that we can work with. So if I find something that I need that's out of Alachia County or Philadelphia County or Montgomery County seems to be one that individuals are looking for things from, I can always contact somebody or they can always, I get contacts also, which is nice. They are looking for things from Lawrence County also. There are things that come out of our county that people are interested in. So they contact me and I get them what they need and vice versa. So it's nice to have that network of individuals.
Well, appreciate all that background that you've given us today. It's very, very informative. Gentlemen, any other questions for Joe Ellen? Well, that being said, we have proposed resolution 33 that has been brought to our attention. And if you're so willing, I could take a motion for us to vote on it.
I move we vote on House Resolution 33.
I'll second.
Thank you both gentlemen. Any other final comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll do roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanada?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Joe Ellen, thank you so much.
Thank you very much for being.
And you are welcome to stay, but we also know you're a busy person. If you have to move along, we understand.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Thanks so much. Next on the agenda is proposed resolution 34. And we did have some earlier discussion about this. This would allocate $15,000 from the Affordable Housing Fund. In fact, just to verify what I had said earlier, the registered recorders office charges for the recording of deeds and mortgages. The law, the state law allows them to set aside a portion of those fees in a separate account to be used to fund affordable housing efforts. The Mission Barn is an independent nonprofit corporation that works closely with the United Methodist Church in providing modular access ramps to individuals who need assistance in accessing their homes. And they are located at 181 Columbus Drive in Shenango Township. This resolution would allocate $15,000 from the Affordable Housing Fund to the Mission Barn. Gentlemen, may I have a motion for this resolution?
So I'll second that.
Thank you both. Any comments or questions? Mr. Sanada?
Sure. I, you know, my previous career, I had an opportunity to tour and visit the Mission Barn many times and I do want to commend them for the work that they do in the community. And I recall they, besides these ramps and everything else, I know during COVID, they played a very pivotal role in Lawrence County as far as getting, we might say, stop out of the community. I know that they had toiletries, they had, they had toothpaste, they had deodorant, they had masks, they had all that stuff at their facility that I had a chance to see. They really, you know, came through for the community during that crisis. So I just, I think that needs to be pointed out that sometimes, you know, their main mission was there, but when the time came, they stepped up. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
Thank you. By the way, before I call on you, Dan, when, when they moved from Hickory Township to Shenango Township, they did have an open house. And Mr. Sanada and I each attended that open house. Very, very neat location. And because you are mechanically inclined and like to build things, I think you'd enjoy seeing it. Maybe we can somehow arrange to have you out and visit them someday. Anyway, I'll turn it over to you.
I would love to know.
Good. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to go see it soon.
Oh, I think you'd enjoy it. I really do. And it's not far, it's just right up the road. I think we did get a motion, is that right, Vanessa? It's been moved and seconded for proposed resolution 34. If there are no other comments or questions, I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanada?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is proposed resolution 35. This involves the coroner's office and specifically relates to one of the deputy coroners, Mr. Scott Penwell. The coroner came in and met with us recently, noted that Mr. Penwell has been working on a year-to-year contract as a deputy coroner. And the coroner is requesting that we approve continuation of that contract, actually retroactively to January 1 of 2024. And this contract would run through the end of the calendar year. And the total cost of the contract is $35,000, which is made payable in 12 monthly installments. And that was the request of the coroner. I was, I think we mentioned that if he, if he were available, he would be here today. But I know that with his, his line of work, for all we know, he might be out right now on a, on a matter. We don't know that. But the coroner and his deputies are available around the clock. Sometimes things happen at odd hours that they get called out for. So what this proposed resolution does is it renews an existing contract that had actually expired in December of last year, the end of last year. And the coroner is asking us to renew this contract for this, for this calendar year. So gentlemen, let me, before I even take a motion, any questions or comments regarding this? Have I overlooked anything? Joe, Dan, any questions or comments?
Is this the same gentleman that? RJ and JR, I should.
RJ.
RJ.
RJ came and talked us.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
And this is, this is to continue to allow him to get paid for the time being.
This is the gentleman I've paid this person.
That's correct, because the contract expired.
I thought so, but I was 100% sure.
Hope that helps you. Anything else, Dan?
No.
Chris, anything? Okay. We're ready to vote then on, or take a motion for proposed resolution 35, if one of you would be so willing.
I make a motion we approve Resolution 35.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you both gentlemen. Further comments or discussion? Hearing none, we'll ask for a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanada?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We will actually drop all the way down to some announcements. The county commissioners will meet again a week from today, February 27, for their weekly public meeting. That'll be at 10 o'clock here. I will note that the following Tuesday, that would be two weeks from today. I will note that the following Tuesday, that would be two weeks from today, and Dan and Chris, if I've got this wrong, correct me. March 5, which is the first Tuesday in March, there will not be a Commissioners' Meeting on March 5. We are members of the State County Commissioners Association, and they have their Spring Conference in Dauphin County that runs from, let's see, March 3 to March 5. So we will be in Dauphin County, and there will not be a Commissioners' Meeting two weeks from today. Also, normally, the County Prison Board, which consists of the District Attorney, the President Judge, the County Controller, the Sheriff, and the three Commissioners, we would normally have our public meeting tomorrow at noon. That meeting has been canceled, and instead, the Prison Board will convene a week from tomorrow, Wednesday, February 28, at 12:00 noon. In this room, it's open to the public. And I did see the legal ad, so it's been, it's been in the paper noting that the Prison Board doesn't meet tomorrow, but does meet one week from tomorrow. Also, it's not on your printed agenda, but Thursday of this week, February 20, I'm sorry, I stand corrected, Friday of this week, February 23. Vanessa, I hope I've got this right. Election Board?
I don't know.
I believe, did we schedule an Election Board meeting on Friday, the 23rd, at 9:30? I believe we did. Hopefully, somebody can confirm that.
Yes, yes, I see it on my schedule.
Dan, I'll wait for you.
I thought I saw it.
I know that's the day we have to go to Vanango County, and
9:30.
That's what you have?
It's 9:30 on Friday.
Friday, the 23rd, that's what I have. I'm going to wait and see what Dan has.
Get to right Friday, how would that happen? Yes, we do.
23rd at 9:30?
It's a special election.
Thank you very much. Thank you, gentlemen. I'll note that on Friday, February 23, at 9:30 a.m., Board of Elections, which consists of three Commissioners, will hold a public meeting in this room. And the purpose, primary purpose of the meeting, there may be other matters of business, but one of the primary reasons is we have a few other polling places that need to be moved and will be taking formal action to address those. So that's this Friday. I will reopen the floor for any public comments or questions that anybody might have at this time. Mr. Perchett?
The coroner and a deputy coroner, is this, is that their full-time work, or do they have other jobs and this is just when they get called out?
That is the case, that these are, they are part-time positions, and they are essentially on call. Now, the coroner does have an office down in the city police station at the corner of East Street and North Street, I think, the old school that was down there many, many years ago. But the coroner does have outside employment. For example, the previous coroner, in fact, many of our coroners in the past have been funeral directors. Rusty Noga and his father were elected county coroners, but they also had their funeral businesses. And purpose for having deputy coroners is obviously if, for example, if the elected coroner, maybe it's perhaps on vacation or sick, they have the capability of calling out a deputy. And then I think the coroners, to their credit, here in Lawrence County, they've tried to have, and I'm not sure if they have three or four deputies, but they've always tried to have at least one deputy from the southern end of the county, so that if there's an incident in the Elwood City area or they're down that way, it's, and the coroner needs to be there sooner rather than later. They can get there more quickly. So I hope that answers your question. Any other public comments? Yes, sir, Mr. Coniston.
How are you, Mr. Bogler? How you doing?
Thank you.
I just want to say that the, I had the opportunity to go to the Law Library. For the twelve years that I lived here, I didn't know it existed. So I was informed that it had, and I went to research rental agreements, and this young lady couldn't help me enough. I compliment, you know, I've been in customer service, and I know you, I, you know, I hope you, I I think you're one of the best as far, you know, I was in the hospitality industry. So I just wanted to let you guys know that from Pina Gallery, the Law Library upstairs is excellent.
You're very kind, and when we see her again, we'll mention that you said good things about her. In the interest of full disclosure, she actually doesn't work for the Commissioners. Her office ultimately reports to the President Judge. There are a number of offices and departments in county government that report to the President Judge, such as the ladies that handle jury services and adult probation, juvenile probation, domestic relations, and the Law Library. Those folks ultimately report to the President Judge, but I'm sure he'd be pleased to hear your comments as well. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Very much. Any other comments or questions? Well, Antonio, I hope we didn't bore you to death. Hope you found this to be a little bit interesting. And these meetings generally run 45 minutes to an hour, actually making pretty good time today. So we're, again, we're very glad that you joined us and appreciate it, Commissioner Sanada hosting you. Closing comments from my fellow Commissioners. Mr. Kennedy?
I just kind of get used to when we were off yesterday. My gears are not working right today, so I don't have a whole lot to say, but it's just, I think we walked in here this morning and got one thing out together, got us going again. But having that day off yesterday did help me at all, so.
Say it did not?
No, I got get used to getting one again, so.
Thank you, Dan. Commissioner Sanada?
I just echo Christian Kennedy's comments on the great work we've done so far visiting the different offices. I know we've got a full schedule ahead for this week and next week, so it's going to take probably about another month, I believe, Vanessa has a schedule, so it's been positive, and we want to continue moving on that platform. I think when we took office, we say we're going to try to work together as a group up here. And I have to tell you, starting our eighth week, and so far, we've been working, trying to work together as a team. Even when we disagree, we want to keep moving forward, because I think everyone's goal is to see the county prosper. That's what we're trying to do.
Thank you, sir. Vanessa or Joe, anything that you folks need to add that maybe we overlooked?
No, sir.
Okay, great, well, thank you all. And I've got to commend both Joe and Vanessa. You know, we kind of make it look easy, but a lot of the legwork, groundwork that goes into preparing everything that we follow along here, they've been working on this diligently. In fact, Vanessa especially, will get upstairs and she'll start preparing for next Tuesday's meeting. So we thank them for that. If there is no other business to be brought before this board, I would entertain an adjournment motion, please.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you both. All those in favor of adjourning, please say aye. Aye opposed, the same sign, the motion carries. Meeting is adjourned, and then Joe will have to turn off the computer. It's still running until Joe turns it off. Thank you all for being here today. 12:30.